Tammy, Mike. Cindy Broad.
Here.
Julie, Jamar, and Kukuro. Mr. Harley.
Here.
Mr. Kerr.
Here.
Dr. Rick.
Here.
Dr. Schaper.
Here.
Mr. Schrod.
Here. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming out on this nice spring evening. We appreciate your participation in our meeting tonight. I do not have a board meeting or a board president message, and there is no public comment tonight. Um, IAEA, ASME, SGA, or STUKA? No reports from them. Looks like you're up, Mike.
Just three quick things, sir. Number one, we received a nice letter from the United Way thanking us and the teachers and the board and administration for their donations through their campaign to help this year. Secondly, May 8th is Excellence in Education event. So what I'm asking the board to do is consider canceling that meeting so we can attend the Excellence in Education event at the KCAC that's being spearheaded and led by the Chamber of Commerce, as well as Mr. Spatafor, which they're going to recognize one Indiana County student. Often they're going to recognize several students, teachers, but one lucky student will walk away with a new car and one lucky teacher will walk away with a new car. And then lastly, later this week, we're going to work on a public announcement. We did receive funding for dual enrollment. So for the second consecutive year, the school board will have been able to provide dual enrollment for our families at additional cost for those who attend IUP. So I'd like to wait until next week or later this week or early next week to release that officially because the donating, the company who's donating has asked us to do that, but I just want to let you know, good news, sir.
Okay, thank you. Question on the May 8th, I think we only have one meeting scheduled for May.
Yep, we're going to do that to May 22nd.
May 22nd.
Most likely, yep. We're going to work on the dates. I sent an email to the board a couple of days ago, make sure that's okay. And we just have to process it, but we'll communicate.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Ron, Solicitor's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just point your attention to 8.6, social media lawsuit. You know, one of the things I will say, I promise not to make a habit of, is that's not something we're going to bring every, every month or every year to the district. But it just so happened, we had the Juul lawsuit, we were able to get some funds through that. I don't want to say class action, but that essentially global action against Juul and Atrio. This is something similar that our firm is getting involved in, and it's against Meta, TikTok, YouTube, Snap, things of that nature. Really, it's just the fact about targeting students, the challenges that are created that cause damage to the school set and the administrative cost, the damage and injury to the actual property, things of that nature. So there are a lot of districts throughout the country right now who are getting involved, and we are going to be recommending that Indiana area school district become one of those districts as well. Again, the administrative resources will hopefully be very small, and financial resources, we are not asking anything off the district, it's contingency fees. So whatever money's come out of that, off of that, off the top, it won't be any financial resource for the district at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, looks like we have a presentation from our security consultant, Bubba.
Um, so I was asked to come tonight and speak on the, the question that's out there. A lot of questions about, you know, armed security at schools. As we know, there's, there's different ways to put security in schools and what their responsibilities are and the pros and cons to such a thing. It's a tough one, right? So it's, it's a tough question to answer, it's a tough question to speak on because as I travel the United States, as I go to these schools and I, and I see the safety and security implementation they, they put in, they're site-specific. There are some schools that, that I could sit at the table today and say, listen, your, your response from the local police department, or you have no jurisdiction, and the local police is, is your state police 40 minutes away? Then I think priority-wise, they have to sit down and say, where are we on the list of, of, you know, having armed security? When we talk about Indiana area school district, the layers that we've built here of safety and security, the partnership you've built with Indiana Borough Police, you have a very sound and a very efficient and effective response to, to active shooter here, along with the, the training that people have received. So, again, it, it's a, it's a tough topic. I understand it goes both ways on should there be armed guards at, at every school? And, and, you know, there are people out there just believe there should be armed guards at every school in the Commonwealth. And, and I understand it, I understand the belief in that. And in my professional opinion, in, in what I do for a living, I, I would have to, you know, understand, what does the school do? What do they have available to them? The, the partnership you guys built with Indiana Borough, I gotta say, and I gotta be honest, I, the schools I go to, I don't see that kind of interaction with any other police department. They go to our core meetings, which are safety and security meetings. They know our topics, our agendas, they speak on them. They're in the schools, they're around the schools, they're at school bus stops, their morning arrival, things like that. What you've built there is just absolutely incredible. And I'm here to tell you that doesn't happen at a lot of schools, not that kind of partnership anyways. Of course, they do their job buys, and as you know, they're available, but what you guys have built with Indiana Borough and what you agreed upon was, was fantastic. And I think that, I think that layer really does protect your, your elementaries as far as a response time. So I'd love to answer any questions that anybody has. If anybody has any questions for me about armed security, I'll, I'll give you my honest opinion, and doesn't make it the law, but I'll give you everything I have.
Anything from any of the board members? Yeah, Julian.
Thank you for being here, and you've been a great help, you've been such a great resource here, Mr. Travis, and we appreciate it very much. But what once seemed to be a relatively rare thing throughout the United States has become all too, I mean, just in this month, we've had like two or three major shootings across, one today at a bank, another one at a school. We've entered into this agreement with the Borough, and I think it's been, as you said, just a, a real bonus to us. And we do have some armed, armed security guards at the senior high and the junior high. And I'm just curious, we've, we've avoided the heretofore discussion of security guards at the elementary schools for a lot of reasons, and none of them are weak reasons, they're all good reasons, not the least of which is, you know, would it frighten the children? Do we really have to have that? Are they effective of the cost? I'd like to get your opinion with the Borough agreement that you're aware of and this discussion on armed security guards or even metal detectors. Nothing seems to be terribly effective, but what do you think would be the most effective at this point for us to do in the future?
I think, I think what you've built so far is absolutely effective and efficient. The last thing you did with the Indiana Borough Police is, has probably put you above and beyond a lot of school districts, and that's the honest, God, truth. There, it can work both ways with armed security, and I've seen it in many schools. I've seen many schools that use sometimes armed security as a crutch, and they don't do anything else. And I'm not saying Indiana would ever do that, I know better than that. But I know there isn't, there isn't 100% anything when it comes to what we implement safety and security. The armed security that's out there, they have a very specific job description, even though, you know, at the high school levels and even, you know, some junior high levels, they, they interact with students and they deter certain things, and, and the partnerships that they build hopefully stop a lot from going on. It was mentioned before that maybe those kind of relationships aren't built with armed security at an elementary, and that's understood, and I can understand that statement. However, I feel very confident to sit here today and tell, say in front of everybody that the time involved in the Indiana Borough Police responding to your elementaries and any kind of threat, I think you should feel very good about that, the opportunity of there and being there and being effective and efficient. As compared to, for instance, if this was Harmony School District, and we were talking about the state police coming from Punxsutawney 40 minutes away, it would be a different discussion, it really would be. But my heart tells me, and as I sit here, that the needs and wants, you guys are doing what you should do. You're, you've been putting them in place accordingly, and they've been working. So I have all the faith in the world in the response in the Indiana Borough Police, I really do.
Okay. Yeah, Jim.
I appreciate your comments and thank you for being here, and it was a very good discussion earlier. Definitely gonna, you know, have lots of other talks, but in that, in that same vein, what's needed and what's effective is always the, the question. And while nothing's 100% effective, there was some talk that, you know, maybe they're not as effective as, the armed security guards aren't as effective as people want them to think they are. Can you speak to any downside if we decide to go in that direction of having the additional layer? Because we do speak in layers, we have several. In this day and age, you know, we kind of have to modify our, our thinking, you know, I went to an elementary school where I'm not even sure the front doors were locked because I don't remember that. That's unheard of now. And, you know, it's, it's just another visible deterrent. If, you know, the shooter is familiar with the area, which most of these shooters are, they're going to know that there's, you know, a security guard. What, what's the downside? I guess I want you to speak to, you know, while we're having this conversation.
So that's a great question, and the truth is, there, I can speak about downside in armed security depending on who it comes from, where it comes from, and what the job description is. I've seen it. I've seen it be more detrimental than, than a help. However, at this school district, I don't know that I can articulate a downside because I know if it would be done, it would be done the right way. It would be the right people with the right job description. So sitting here today, I can't tell you there's a downside, I can tell you there's an upside to what you've done, but you would absolutely do it the right way like you've done in the past already.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Bubba, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night, everybody. Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
All right, looks like we're down to number three, approval of minutes in the agenda. May I have a motion to approve both? Moved in second, questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Nothing heard, all motions carry. Okay, we're down to board reports. There are, at the ICTC at our last meeting, we covered a lot of the more perfunctory things. I know they're in the middle of their knockdies now. There's also some donations, you know, we improved the budget at that level as well. But the ICTC is planning some, some major renovation and upgrade to their facilities. I was not able to attend that meeting, I think Jared went. Jared, if you could give us a thumbnail sketch as to what they're, what they're planning to do up at ICTC.
Yeah, they had a, an ESCO provider come in, because that's one of the avenues that they're looking to do the renovations. And the ESCO provider pretty much presented kind of a laundry list of what he, they felt needed done, potential savings, potential costs. The people who were in attendance at the meeting, I think the consensus is now that they need to take that laundry list and kind of, you know, what are our wants, what are our needs? And then at the end of the day, how are we going to pay for that? So that's kind of the process I think they're working through right now. I think there was a pretty strong consensus that if they can, an ESCO project seems to be kind of the way to go. There was some questions on how do you prove that an ESCO project is more financially, is a better financial avenue to go than just fitting out the project? Which we, you know, there was some conversation on that, but I do think there was a consensus there amongst the people that, you know, if we can, ESCO is the way we want to go. But again, there's wants and there's needs, and how big they can make the project based on really, are the seven sending districts willing to pay for it? And if they are, what are they willing to pay, so?
So their total outstanding now is about $300,000 on their debt with their bonds, right?
Probably a little bit more than that, that would be about our share. There's two years left on that outstanding.
Oh, that's just our share?
Yes. So we, there's about two years left next year, the 23, 24, then 24, 25, on the bond that was originally taken out, I believe 2004, for the last renovation, so that renovation was almost 20 years ago. But, and when I say renovation, we're pretty much talking, not almost renovation, but mechanical systems that are just not working. There is not proper air conditioning in and out of that building right now because there are some mechanical machines that are just, they're not working and they can't be fixed at this point. So renovation may sound nice, but some of them are just flat-out needs that need to happen at that, at that building. So those are the conversations I think both the JOC, the superintendents, and everybody will be having over the next couple of months.
Okay, to be, to be clear, so everybody understands, if the ICTC does elect to borrow, pick a number to do this, then the district will become obligated to pay some pro rata share of that obligation over the length of the bond, the same way we do it for, for our, our internal bonds, correct?
Yes, typically our Indiana share has been around 42%.
Okay. So just everybody.
It's based on our enrollment at our high school, who can go. It's based on our actual number of kids that we send, but then it's also based on a couple other financial elements as well, so. Biggest pieces are, yes, our enrollment and our actual enrollment of kids at ICTC.
So the bottom line is, if they do decide to do this, that annual payment that we make to cover the last bond, when it goes away, there'll be another one essentially to replace.
But that's part of our, that's part of what we send every year, that, that debt payment, correct?
It has been, and it's been a big piece of our tuition. It's usually around $150,000 a year that we're sending up there between interest and principal. Our, what we send the ICT as a whole is over a million dollars.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Two, what's going on over there?
We haven't met since our last meeting, but there is the dinner coming up on April 18th, the workshop at Marion Center, area school district for school board members.
Okay, very good. Tammy, anything from outreach?
No, nothing new, we haven't meet, we haven't met recently, sorry.
All right, thanks, Tammy. Tom, academic.
I don't think I've had a meeting since the last, that's correct? Correct. So I can drop right into, make some motions. Objections, I'll make a motion that the board approves 52, 53, 54, and 55.
It's moved in second on 52 through 55. Questions, comments, or discussion on any of those? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, Cindy, policy and personnel.
We also have not had a meeting since the last board meeting. So board policy, 6.2, they're all listed. 6.3, we've got agreements of memorandum between the Borough Police Department and the Indiana State Police. We've got a resignation of support staff. Linda Schwartz from the senior high school is resigning due to retirement. And then we have a long-term substitute assignment, and that will be Emily Vogel as a long-term East Pike Learning Support Substitute Teacher. And all that information will begin given to the press following the meeting. So I'll take those all as consent.
Good. I have second. Okay, moved in second on 62 through 65. Questions, comments, or discussion on any of those items? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion's carry. Carrie, what's going on at Buildings and Grounds?
Well, the first thing is, we did have a meeting last week on April 3rd. I'm looking for the, the meeting minutes here, but I think I can remember most of it. And Jared, we had discussions about Eisenhower and the design developments, we had a presentation and discussion with Beukart Horn. And then we also went over some revised estimates or discussion about replacing doors here at East Pike. We talked about installing the Ballard at Horace Mann. We talked about working with the Borough Police of doing a, like a drop-off and pickup study at the Eisenhower renovation or school due to the renovation and doubling the enrollment. Anything else, good?
The junior high poll.
The junior high poll is in need of some repairs, so Jared and Janie scheduled a tour of that. It's next, this Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday for the board to go look at that.
Is that in the morning?
It's at 9:00 AM. And then we also, didn't we go over some donations and, or get ready some stuff? Is that the best?
That was, uh, we had one two weeks prior to that.
Okay, it's all on that. The, speaking of Eisenhower, we have a motion on tonight's agenda regarding approving the design development submission by Beukart Horn to the school district on the renovation design, and we've been talking about that over the past several meetings. So they're going, I mean, we're just working on continuing and finalizing the design of the renovations, working through that, scheduling the Act 34 hearing and other things. So we'll move into the motions, I'd like to take them separate. So I'll take 7.3 is the Eisenhower Design Development Submission. Based on the recommendation of the, of the board committee as a whole, the Design Development Submission from Beukart Horn be approved as submitted with updates to the mechanical drawings as discussed at the March 28th Board Workshop and in compliance with the agreement between the district and Beukart Horn.
Second, moved in second.
Tony is online tonight, so, you know, if there's any questions, because they had sent out some revised drawings based on the previous meeting. And I think, Tony, the one question I had is, there appears to be storage for the tables and chairs for the gymnasium and the slash cafeteria.
Tony, are you there?
Yes, I was having trouble unmuting, but I'm here. And yes, there are what I believe to be ample storage facilities for the gymnasium and cafeteria uses. In fact, you may even tell me that it looks like there's more than enough, and we can certainly review that with you and, and if not needed, we can take it away.
I don't think that's ever a problem.
Yeah. Some storage in that new building would be good.
So there's, there's storage at the south end of the gymnasium, which has been there, and, and we, one of the questions that I, I don't want to get involved in it this evening, but we may not need that stair there. And then there's also the storage at the south end of the kitchen that's, when I changed that wall position, it, it got considerably larger. So I believe there'll be ample storage there.
Right. And does anybody, the board, does anybody want to see that revised plan brought up on the screen tonight? Because that was just sent.
I don't have it at my disposal here unless you have.
My disposal is just a brief. The one today, Tony, that I sent them was just the kitchen move that you sent, I think, Friday.
Slight vault movement of the vault.
Yeah.
Not, not really. Did the administration and the principals look at the change of the initiative area where the therapists and the speech moved around and the STEM, STEAM and the art room? That's, has that been gone through the principals?
Yeah, Aaron was present for all of that and.
But she's seen, she's seen the revised and.
I can follow up and make sure, sir. I can't speak to that with 100% certainty, but I can follow up and.
Revised plans would have been sent to them last week, but never.
I understand, I'd like to make sure they had, they had a chance to respond in a meaningful way.
Yep. And I would, I'm sorry, I would offer that I'm happy to come meet with whomever wants to see it. I know there likely is going to involve the cafeteria folks with the food service, you know, the introduction of that food service area to the lobby and the, and the modifications to the design to shift some rooms around to accommodate that. I'm happy to pop up there, you know, meet for a few hours with whomever wants to meet about it. Again, as I said, the, the relocation of partitions within the shell of the building at this point is, is not going to slow us down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm, certainly, Tony, I'm not making an objection to the plans. They're, they're what we expected to see. I just want to make sure that Aaron and, and the people who are going to be living in these rooms have, have seen them. I'm certainly going to approve this to the DD, which is what your motion is. But, but I will point out that, that, that I don't think this has gone through a complete study by the administration and the teachers.
Paul?
And especially for that breakfast area.
It's a breakfast, but it's also the art and the steam room.
Right.
Substantial changes within the shell.
Yeah.
Okay. Virtually no other changes for the rest of the plans. So, you know, it's what I expected to see, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, but so Eleanor can take a good look at how that's going to operate.
What are any monetary implications if we, if we approve the design development and then Eleanor and somebody else makes changes?
Tammy?
So as I've said, the, the modifications at this point, if we are, you know, fixed on the shell, moving partitions around is, is not going to be impactful to, to the budget. I think we've made substantial savings in some areas, and, and there are a couple of areas that I still want to, you know, meet with the Buildings and Grounds Committee or whomever about on roof access and some things, but I really don't see, you know, you could rearrange the entire administration area, it's not going to change the size of the building, it might change the shape of some rooms, so no, it really makes no difference at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
No other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, one no from Cindy, and a motion carries.
7.4, Act 34 Resolution, that the board approves the attached Act 34 Resolution for a public hearing scheduled for Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the junior high auditorium.
Second.
Moved in second. Ron, if you would, please, just give us a thumbnail sketches of what the purpose of the Act 34 hearing is and how it'll be different than a, a normal board meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Not, not tremendously different, we're still going to have the time requirements for public participation, signing up, things of that nature, but it's really to get community input. Under the code, we're required that if we're going to do 20% of new construction in a building, we have to have this. It gets 20 days before the hearing that we'll advertise for, so that's why we're doing it so early and in, in advance. Gives the community an opportunity to come, understand what the building project is going to look like. Any recommendations or objections to take into account as we move forward through the building, but that's the purpose of it in a, in a nutshell.
Okay, and we, and it'll be, there'll be a stenographer and some other things like that?
Yes, yeah, stenographer recorded, we can have a transcript if required, and all of that, again, we'll have it set up in kind of a similar fashion as we do public participation, where individuals get to come up and kind of explain, again, support or objection to that building project. But it is, it is stenographically recorded.
Okay.
Mr. President, the board asked us to over-communicate this, I'll make sure I get.
Yeah, junior high.
So Mike was going to say something?
What I'll do is, after a support vote tonight, I'll make sure, the board asked me to make sure it's on the website, make it visible to everyone, so I'll do that tonight depending on your vote here, and I'll get all the information out so people can see the information well in advance. So I'll do that here tonight.
And we are scheduled to do this at junior high, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it won't be at this room, it'll be at the junior high on May the 1st.
Jared and I met today, we got some additional photos from Tony, I'll take care of it tonight.
Yes, Cindy.
Before we vote on this, I do want to say that I will vote yes for this, but I will continue voting no for design development, things about the building, that I do not think this design is academically as efficient as it should be for our students for the future and for taxpayers' dollars. So please don't think I'm going crazy if I vote yes sometimes and no. We'd have to do the Act 34 whether we had what I consider a good design or not, so.
Fair enough, Cindy, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on Act 34? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Tony.
Have a nice evening.
Yep. Julian.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. We did not have a committee meeting tonight for audit and finance, but I would like to just go through the motions and ask for comments and then I think we could just take them as a whole. Um, we have a donation from Delaney Subaru, um, which is very nice for the Eisenhower Elementary School. Thank them very much for that. And the board has a donation of a memorial plaque and a tree to honor Mason McCollough. And that was, um, donated by members of the, um, digital media production class. That's really very nice. Do we, um, is it going to be placed in that room, Jared, or do you know?
We have Mr. Pushkar here this evening with us. Um, if it's okay with you, Madam Vice President, we give him a minute to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Eric, if you don't mind, take the floor, sir.
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you for coming up, Lee.
Thank you, no problem. I want to thank Sarah Lynn, I do as well.
Jure.
Jure for being here. I'm so excited to be here. Sarah had, uh, come to me about a month or two ago that, uh, they were going to with the Boys and Girls Lacrosse, give a Mason McCollough award, uh, similar to the, uh, fall football award that is done for, um,
I do, yeah, really quick, um, I came here with Eric to talk to you about this as well. If you'd like to know a little bit more about the Mason McCollough Award. I did bring some information, um, with me. If you would like, I can pass that out so you can all look at it and see what we, um, have been working on as we talk to you about this. Would you prefer that we do that?
How about go present and then give us information, uh, when you're done? We'll test it. Yeah, please.
Sure. So anyways, so, um, for the last couple of years, I've considered putting a plaque and a tree out somewhere in the Building and Grounds area at the high school for Mason because he meant so much to so many of the students and so many of the teachers at the school. In my 31 years of teaching, I'd never lost a current student of mine before Mason. Uh, it, it greatly impacted me and our school community. So, um, I believe this plaque will be a nice, uh, dedication to him in perpetuity. Um, looking for like a small weeping cherry tree or something like that. Uh, that can be put on the athletic field somewhere, or, you know, on the hillside somewhere with a plaque. Very nice.
Um, to talk about the Mason McCollough Award, just to give you a little bit of background, uh, my son is a lacrosse player. He's been playing since fourth grade. Um, and, um, you know, I also, I taught Mason, had him as a student. And, um, I was talking with some of the students who are lacrosse players, both boys and girls. And we talked about how much Mason had meant to the school community and what a loss it was for all of us when he, um, had passed away. So we came up with something called the Mason McCollough Leadership Award. Um, I have been in contact with Mason's family. I have spoken, uh, with both his mother and his father. And they have agreed to come back and present the award on behalf of their son. Uh, Mr. McIlhany was present when we, uh, spoke with Mr. McCollough and he said that he was so grateful that Indiana still provides love and support to the family as they still grieve the loss of an amazing young man. So it was Mr. McIlhany, myself, Mr. Pushkar, Mr. Stance, uh, Mr. Rowan, the athletic director. And we also had a committee of students, uh, both a boy and girl, um, lacrosse players. And I'm just going to read the notes that we've had from their meetings. Uh, Mason was someone who was loved and respected by his family, friends, classmates, teachers, and teammates. He had a smile that could light up a room and cared about everyone he met. He was kind and led by example. This award carries on his legacy as someone who is an outstanding individual both on and off the lacrosse field. And then they came up with the criteria. So this is, um, student-driven. We're just kind of helping them to make this happen. So they came up with a variety of things, which I'll pass this out to you. You can see, um, all the, the criteria that they came up with. And it will be given at their senior nights. The boys' senior night is April 19th, the girls' senior night is May 2nd. Um, and it is decided by player voting. And Mr. Rowan is going to handle that and the students will vote for the student, uh, the senior that they think most uh, deserves that award. And they also have to explain why, um, to the athletic director they feel, um, they deserve that award. Mr. Stance, um, has stepped up and is helping us to create the plaque. Um, and Callan Romance, who is a student, uh, who's doing a senior independent study with the Technology Education Department, um, he's also helping to create the plaque. So what's been really neat for us as administrators and teachers at the building is this has really been student-driven, student-created, um, from start to finish. So I feel very honored to be able to, um, do this for their family because as Mr. Pushkar said, losing Mason was difficult, not only for the students, but for those of us, uh, that taught him and knew him as well. So when I was talking with Mr. Pushkar, that's when we had discussed about the idea of the, uh, digital media, uh, club doing the tree because Mason not only loved lacrosse, but he also, um, really enjoyed doing, uh, the digital media classes as well. So that kind of is how all that ties, um, together. So that's why we wanted to come and, and talk with you and explain a little bit about, um, what this is and what's been driving us.
And the plaque that will be by the tree, the last photo I ever took of Mason was the 4, was killed in his car accident. It was him getting off the bus in an all-white tuxedo. And I remember my final words to him was, he looked like an angel to me. It wasn't until days later that I came across that photo and I had it always in my drawer. And I want that to be on the plaque. Mason meant a lot to so many people. I appreciate your acceptance of placing a tree and a plaque for him and for the students that were affected and us teachers as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, before we go into the motions, I think Tony had raised his hand. I followed up. Oh, you've got, okay, never mind. Go ahead.
Um, thank you. And that's lovely what you're doing. What a tremendous thing. So, thank you. Um, the Indiana County Technology Budget is something we're going to vote on tonight. Uh, Jared, do you want to say a few things about the budget, please?
Yeah, I think it's pretty much in line with, um, what they have done in the past. Uh, it is representing, as it says in the motion, a 1.3, 1.34% increase, um, in overall expenditures. Um, for Indiana, we are of the seven sending districts. We will be seeing the largest increase in our, um, share of their budget, our contribution. It's an increase of, um, almost $120,000, um, which for us is about almost a 12% increase. So it's pretty significant, but, you know, that is due to our increased enrollment, our three-year average enrollment at our high school as well as, um, our overall increase in the average of, of number of kids who actually attend ICTC, which we are now up over 100. Um, the three-year average is at 108. Last year it was at 93. So we've seen significant increase in the number of students over the past couple of years who are attending ICTC. So, um, you know, that is the main driver of why the Indiana is seeing such a large increase.
And nursing program at Clarion, could you just say a brief word about that?
I believe they have been budgeting, leaving kind of a placeholder in their budget for the past couple of years, looking at maybe, um, coming up with an agreement to, somewhere in Clarion, um, expand their program, um, for LPN training, um, which I think, you know, I don't have direct information about what happened, but they're no longer looking to expand their program in that direction. So they've now officially removed that from their budget.
Okay. Um, and then we have the, um, STUCO grant. $500 is the amount, um, the board of, uh, grant application for junior high STUCO to Adagio Health. $500 to support. I think it's great tobacco-resistant unit activities. Good for them. Anything in common on that?
Now, we're just really proud of the kids taking it quite seriously in their activism and their leadership.
Yes, their future and their health.
Absolutely.
And also tonight, uh, I'm really pleased about this. Um, maybe Ron wants to say something about the social media lawsuit. Looks like we're going to be taking legal ash, action against Meta, TikTok, and YouTube. Do you want to tell us?
I did, and that was kind of what I presented on earlier. Yeah, when I was discussing that, it's really the same, same risk we saw in the dual litigation that they're, it's, it's not just, we think that a company is not doing well. It's the targeting of students and how they did so, uh, that were really.
And also for students to understand that social media is not a toy, it's a tool. Like all tools, it can be dangerous. So, um, I, that's, unless there are any other questions, I think we could take all of, the current bills. So I think we can take all of them, um, together. So I would move that 8.2, um, the approval of bills, 8.3, these, uh, beautiful donations. Um, 8.4, the technology center budget, 8.5, the STUCO grant from the junior high, and 8.6, the social media lawsuit.
Second. Moved in second. Any further questions, comments, or discussion on 82 through 86? Having heard, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, we're now down to the closing. Uh, we have, uh, no discussion item for 9.1. Any public comment on agenda items, 9.2? Nothing heard there. We had some enclosures this evening. Uh, we had an executive session prior to the meeting. Ron, would you want to recap for the benefit of the press?
Uh, sure.
Executive session.
Yes, Mr. President, um, we did have an update on safety and security that was presented by Mr. Petola. Uh, we also talked about the Eisenhower, uh, claim, insurance claim litigation. And we did give an update about the social media, uh, litigation as well, which we then approved as 8.6. Um, that's all I, I believe was on the executive session, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Um, our next board meeting will be a special meeting on April the 24th at 7:00 PM for general purposes. Currently, we have an academic and extracurricular scheduled for the 17th, subject to review and change by the administration. And we also have audit and finance on April the 24th as well. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Cinda.
Second? Anybody second? Okay, moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?